Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Opening roll call, please.
Mrs. Cochran?
Here.
Mrs. Coontz?
Here.
Ms. Snyder?
Here.
Mrs. Stripmadder?
Here.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is in the back of the room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a council, councilman after the meeting.
I would like to make a motion to excuse Sam Ray from tonight's meeting. I'll second.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Heather. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Thank you. We're looking next for a motion to accept minutes from September 6, 2022, council meeting, as presented and not read, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September 6, 2022. Council meeting is presented and not read.
I'll second.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Heather. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Thank you. We're looking next for a motion to accept purchase orders from September 3, 2022, to September 16, 2022, totaling $20,384.07, as presented and not read, please.
I'll make a motion to accept purchase orders from September 3, 2022, to September 16, 2022, totaling $20,384.07, as presented and not read.
I'll second.
Thanks, Heather. Thanks, John. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Thank you. We're looking next for a motion to accept bills from September 3, 2022, to September 16, 2022, totaling $105,172.38, as presented and not read, please.
I'll make a motion to accept bills from September 3, 2022, to September 16, 2022, totaling $105,172.38, as presented and not read.
I'll second.
Thank you, Laura. Thanks, Nikki. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Thanks. Thanks, council. We're looking next for a motion to accept August 2022 bank reconciliation report, as presented and not read, please.
I'll make a motion to accept August 2022 bank reconciliation report as presented and not read.
I'll second.
Thanks, Laura. Thanks, John. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, council. We're moving next into the reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Resolution number 7202-2022. A resolution proclaiming the village of Lakemore will observe October 16 through October 22, 2022, as Stormwater Awareness Week. Resolution number 7203-2022. A resolution approving the village of Lakemore Police Department to apply for the Ohio Body worn Camera Grant Program for 2023. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Lakemore County of Summit and State of Ohio. Section 1, the council approves the village of Lakemore Police Department to apply for the Ohio Body worn Camera Grant Program 2023 from the Ohio Office of the Criminal Justice Services. This grant helps to increase the use of body worn cameras to serve a multitude of functions, to improve evidence collection, to train officers, to strengthen officer performance and accountability, to enhance agency transparency and to document and investigate encounters between police and the public. Section 2, the village of Lakemore is requesting $29,182.50 from the grant after a 10% match requirement of $3,242.50 that the village of Lakemore is responsible to pay. Section 3, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 4, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the village of Lakemore. Therefore, this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption and approval by the mayor of the village of Lakemore. Resolution number 7204-2022. A resolution accepting the funding from Serve Ohio 2022 Make a Difference Day Grant. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Lakemore County of Summit and State of Ohio. Section 1, council accepts the funding from the Serve Ohio 2022 Make a Difference Grant Day. The grant will help afford the events during the Stormwater Awareness Week. Section 2, the village of Lakemore received $1,000 for this project. The event day will be October 22, 2022. Section 3, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 4, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure in the interest of the health, peace, and safety of the citizens of the village of Lakemore. Therefore, this resolution should take effect immediately. Resolution number 7205-2022. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Summit County Fiscal Officer. Be it resolved by the council of the village of Lakemore, Ohio. Section 1, council hereby authorizes the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission. Council authorizes the necessary tax levies and certify them to the Summit County Fiscal Officer. Section 2, a copy of the tax levy certification is attached here too and made part here of as if fully were written herein. Council understands the village of Lakemore's official certificate of estimated resources for 2023 will be sent prior to January 1, 2023. Section 3, it is found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with the law. Section 4, this resolution shall be in effect on and after the earliest period allowed by law. Resolution number 7206-2022. A resolution approving the fire chief to hire Willie Twitty as part-time firefighter medic with the Lakemore Fire Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Lakemore County of Summit and State of Ohio. Section 1, council approves to hire Willie Twitty as a part-time firefighter medic with the Lakemore Fire Department. Section 2, Mr. Twitty will serve a one-year probation. Section 3, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council or any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 4, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure in the interest of the health, peace, and safety of the citizens of the village of Lakemore. Therefore, this resolution should take effect immediately. Resolution number 7207-2022. A resolution approving the fire chief to terminate Ryan Henry as a part-time firefighter medic with the Lakemore Fire Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Lakemore County of Summit and State of Ohio. Section 1, council approves to terminate Ryan Henry as a part-time firefighter medic with the Lakemore Fire Department effective immediately. Section 2, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council or any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 3, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure in the interest of the health, peace, and safety of the citizens of the village of Lakemore. Therefore, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Ordinance number 1790-2022. An ordinance to amend, ordinance 1743-2021, make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the village of Lakemore, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the village of Lakemore County of Summit and State of Ohio. Section 1, council approves to increase appropriations in sanitary sewer fund 5201, $50,400 for ham and tree services for the sanitary sewer evaluation study and six-inch force main replacement in Ohio Edison for electric costs. Section 2, council approves to increase revenues in general fund, $10,520 from Young's Auction Center. Fire EMS Grants Fund, 2052, $1,776.46 from Summit County for reimbursement for the fire investigation equipment. Fire EMS Donations Fund, 2903, $599.98 from the Lakemore Lions Club. Section 3, treasury for payments for many of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving private certificates and vouchers therefore approved by the board or officers authorized by law to approve the same or an ordinance or resolution of council to make the expenditures, provided that no warrant shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages except a person's employed by authority of and in accordance with law or ordinance. It shall be provided further that the appropriations for contingencies can only be expended upon appeal to thirds voted council for items of expense constituting a legal obligation against the village for purposes other than those covered by their specific appropriations herein made. Section 4, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the village of Lakemore, Ohio. Therefore, this ordinance shall go into effect immediately.
May I go first? I apologize. It should have been picked up.
No, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, thanks. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Tracy. We'll move right into the mayor's report. I have quite a bit of things to announce this evening. First of all, I would like to say congratulations to the Springfield Assembly of God on a fantastic Sunday service and Community Day festival, car show, and picnic that they had there. Several of us attended. It was very, very well attended, and it was a wonderful morning across Lakemore Plaza at the Springfield Assembly of God. That was a great, great day, great event. Thanks for the invitation and congratulations on such a successful day for the church. I also would like to say congratulations to the Springfield Township for a very successful car show and fundraiser for their K-9 unit. That was also on Sunday. There was a lot happening in town locally this weekend. I'd like to give a shout out to the Edwin Shaw Challenger Golf Course that had a, I believe it was an in remembrance golf outing fundraiser on Saturday, and that was also very well attended. It was nice to see so much activity up there. And then, I don't know if anyone made it out to Waterworks Park, but they had, again, another successful softball tournament there. So I don't know if anyone made it. I didn't make it to Waterworks, but some people were there and they sent me some pictures. So that looked like it was a lot of fun. So there was a lot happening locally, you know, right around here in Lakemore, and that's wonderful for us. I also would like to remind everyone that the Lakemore Food Pantry will operate Wednesday, September 28 at 5:00 p.m. at Lakemore United Church, Methodist Church for all qualified Springfield Township and Lakemore Village of Lakemore residents. Again, that's 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, September 28. And I would like to invite everyone up to the plaza just around the corner here on October 8. There's a lot happening there that day. There is a library book sale. I'm not sure if you were going to mention that. I'm sorry if I took it from you. Okay. The library's having a book sale that day, the Friends of the Library. That's in the morning. There's also going to be a fundraiser for some children. I believe it's three sisters that have cancer, and they're having a craft show fundraiser for them there. There's a poker run that day. There's going to be music, food trucks, and a chamber car show. And there's quite a few people that have responded coming for the chambers. So that's going to be a very big event, I think, just up here at Lakemore Plaza on October 8. Several different small events, but I think they coordinated together to make it, you know, a pretty big day for everyone. So I hope it's successful. Everyone's invited. So with that, I will pass it off to the council report. Mrs. Cochran?
Okay. I'm going to read a statement that was written by Shelley Monocino, the Springfield local school district superintendent. I'm not going to read it in its entirety, and I might, I'm just going to read the first two paragraphs. It starts off with "Tonight," which was really Friday night. "The Lakemore Police were alerted that a minor with a possible weapon was at the Springfield Coventry Football Game and in the spectator stands. The minor and other persons were quickly identified and apprehended by the Lakemore Police and taken into custody." The individuals taken into custody are not Springfield students. They are not Springfield students. They're not even Springfield residents. I just added that in, though. "Because we were assured by the police that the threat was contained, the football game continued. The safety of our students, families, and visitors takes precedence over everything. Our Springfield, or our Lakemore Police attend all of the Springfield home games, and we are extremely thankful for their diligence and quick actions. We also want to thank those in attendance who saw something and said something. It is incumbent upon all of us to look out for each other, and I am proud that this happened tonight, that we all looked on each other." And I just wanted to bring this up tonight, this incident, and not, we're not going to dwell on it or take questions or talk about it or anything. But just to let you know that there was an incident. It was very swiftly resolved by our police department. The chief was there. Four officers were there. Some people would not even notice anything happened. And in two weeks, at our next council meeting, those four officers hopefully will be here. Some of them will be. And the mayor is going to give them a certificate of commendation. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. Nikki, yes?
Hi. So I'll piggyback off what you said. The community event at the church behind, or across the street from Lakemore Plaza was a beautiful day. My family had a blast. My kids had so much fun. So I want to, I'm not a member of that church, but thank you for having that and providing all that fun stuff for all of us in this community, too. Also, we're going to change it up a little bit for Halloween. It's just a little bit different. So on October, what day are we doing?
22nd.
The 29th. Okay.
Oh, mine's the 22nd.
That's okay. So Halloween this year is going to be in the village on Saturday, October 29. Now normally, we have everyone come. We do a hall, like a costume contest. We give bags of candy. We're going to do it a little bit different this year. So our guys and ladies and whoever's at the fire department, they're actually going to, they're going to sell hot dogs and snacks. Right around the same time, we're going to be having our party from 3 to 5, which will be the Lakemore Halloween costume contest, and you'll get your bag of candy. But we're kind of putting it all together so that when the kids are done down here with their costume, you know, contest and their candy and getting hot dogs from the fire association, they can just go right on off to trick or treat. So I think we kind of wanted to eliminate the, dress them up, bring them down here, then go home and wait, and then go trick or treating. We're going to hang out before trick or treat. So I think it'll be a really fun time. And then actual trick or treat will be from 5 to 7 for the village. Does anybody have anything to add to that? Because...
Just, just know that the pancake breakfast isn't going to happen.
Oh, yeah, I should mention that. So normally, they do a pancake breakfast, but because we're switching up a little bit, they're going to provide more of a, like a dinner slash...
Lunch.
Yes, like a, yeah, before you go trick or treating, eat a hot dog and have a drink and a bag of chips, and then go have fun. So bring your dollars. I'm not sure what the prices will be. It'll be affordable, and it goes to a good cost. So trick or treat will be fun, and that is all I have. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Nikki. Anne, you're up.
I'd just like to, as usual, thank Frank and Jim from Channel 1023 for covering our local government meetings in Lakemore and Springfield. And they also provide some programming with local programs of interest. And just thanks for the job you do. You can find the listings of the programs on Channel 1023 or the Springfield Township website provides them as well. And thanks again for all you do. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Anne.
Going to announce about the next council meetings. Will be October 3 and October 17, both of those at 7:00 p.m. And also, our next council workshops will be September 27 and October 12, each of those at 6:00 p.m. And also to remind everybody, we have a few more Saturdays where we're going to have movies put on either down at Dodds Park or up at Waterworks. I think the next one is...
I think it'll be at Waterworks.
Is up at Waterworks. Come on out, watch a movie. Doesn't cost nothing. And it's a good way to spend a Saturday.
Yeah. Anne?
All right.
Heather, yeah. Thanks, Sean.
I just, well, one of the things, I would like to remind everyone, now that we're headed into fall and the leaves start falling and people are going to start cleaning up their yard and things like that, we just ask that you please don't rake your leaves or yard debris into the roadways or into the ditches because it does have a negative effect on our lake. So if you are environmentally conscious, please, you know, do this to help us, you know, keep our lake clean and help us continue for it to get better. The other thing, I would like to remind everyone that on Tuesdays for the rest of the month of September, at GIO's, the old Limbo's, I think everybody still calls it Limbo's, but it's GIO's now. For the, all day, for the, all day Tuesdays for the month of September, GIO's has their Give Back Tuesdays. So this month, it goes to the Spartan Snack Pack. And for anybody that does not know what that program does, we send food home for kids on the weekends that might not otherwise have food to get them through till the next school day on Monday. So it's a great cause, and we would greatly appreciate it if you could come out and support the Spartan Snack Pack so that we can get this program off the ground again because it was in two years hiatus with COVID. So we're trying to get back there. So any support would be greatly appreciated. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Heather. Anything else?
I do just want to add that this is our first live YouTube broadcast, which I, I think is great. People are busy. We catch up on, on what's going on in our community. We can't come to a meeting. Now you can watch the meeting live, or even go back and watch it at a later date. So hi, kids, if you're watching. I love you guys. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Nikki.
It's important. Thanks, guys.
Anything else? Did you want to add anything, Tracy?
We're just going to start advertising the different things for Stormwater Awareness Week. And then, like we said, on October 22, we'll have a, an event, meet at Waterworks Park. We're hoping to have a cleanup and then pass out saplings.
Yay.
Yay.
Little trees. We got green little trees. I love it. All right. Anything else? Anybody? Anne? John? Any more? Heather? Fiscal officer? Okay. Okay. So we'll move then next into a hearing before council. We have one gentleman signed up, and it's Mr. Taylor, Marshall Taylor. Would you come up to the podium, please? Say your name and address. And you didn't have a reason. Oh, yeah. And Laura will be the timer. Three minutes. Okay? Yeah?
Thank you. It's a few minutes.
Okay.
We had speed on Springfield Lake Drive, and I know it has been up to at least 35 to 50 miles an hour coming down through there going to these parties. And we never see a policeman down there at that time in that evening. And I'll tell you, when this guy got hurt up here on that bicycle, by tricycle or motorcycle, whatever he's on, you put a sign, put that little flicker up there on Tuesday to tell them what speed limit is going. And it, when the speed limit, what the speed limit was, it was 25 miles an hour. I had people coming down through in front of me doing 35 and 40. And I come around the corner, coming down that way. And there was a policeman many years ago. I'd say probably 40 years ago, 40, 45 years ago. Maybe not that long, but somewhere in that area. Told me that council told him, nobody, policemen are going to be on Springfield Lake Drive on these, on the weekend. Now, I'll tell you what dropped that to my attention. They put that blinker up there on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and it was gone.
It has to be. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Why was it gone? Because of parties going on down there. That's the reason. Exactly. I know it was.
No, they move it around every week.
Huh?
They move it around every week.
I've never seen it nowhere else.
It's been all over.
It was by me on Sunday side. I promise you that.
They move it, they move it around.
I don't go on them side streets.
They move it around every week.
It was by my house.
It was on Acres for a while, too.
Yeah.
I come out of my driveway the other night. I don't know. Guy flying down through there, and I pulled out, and before I got around the curb, he was pulling this business over here. Before I got around the curb, he told me how much time he took. How much speed was he going? And that's all, that's all about the speed I'm going to talk about because I want some cops, policemen out there on, right these Saturday and Sunday.
She's Smith is right there behind you.
Our chief's here tonight. He's here.
He's the police chief. He ought to be able to do what he's, what, he knows where the speeders are. And you should be there where those speeders are. Now, that ditch you had them dig up there.
The ditch? Okay. That's her. Go ahead.
They dug that ditch.
Sorry.
A guy stood right down there. I think it was one of your head guys. A guy going through us a spray and spraying it and showing him where to dig it. He dug it up right to the edge of the blacktop. Right up to the edge. There's no burn there whatsoever. And when he come up through there, he tore the corner. Your driveway comes out, and you always have a little corner there to pull out on. Well, they tore that out. My driveway goes straight out there. They tore that out.
Three minutes.
Okay.
So I don't know why he, he don't, you got plenty of room to take a ditch up through there without coming up against the blacktop.
I'll come and look at it.
Okay.
With Jim.[1705.42]
Okay. Mr. Taylor, that was actually your three minutes, but I'm happy to stay after the meeting though, if you, if you have time. Our chief's here, Tracy's here, she never leaves.
Did you have?
Well, I'm going to tell you about that junk house.
That's her, after the meeting, that's Mrs. Cochran.
If it's, the house is next to you.
I'd like to tell them where people can know it, that it's here, can hear what it is.
If you're talking about the house is next to you, are those the ones you're talking about?
Yeah, I walked in the front door of that, and it's springy, and on the carpet, when it rains hard, you get your feet wet.
Jack did an external inspection, he's the zoning inspector, and we're waiting to get permission to enter the house to do an internal inspection. So we are handling it.
If he's on them, I'm going to call the Summit County Health Department in to look at it.
Okay, but we are handling it on our end.
It's built on the ground.
Thank you.
Built right on the ground.
Sure, I know what you're talking about. Appreciate it, Mr. Taylor.
But we are handling it.
Thank you sir. Again, our chief's right there, and then Tracy's for the ditch and the home, and Laura also for the home.
Yeah, we'll come check your ditch.
Appreciate it, thank you.
A policeman told me one time, like I told you years ago, that they were told to stay off Springfield Lake Drive on the evening, on the weekend.
I've seen him there.
They've never been there.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen him there.
I'm sitting right there looking out the window all the time, I never see one out there.
I do, I do, but Chief Smith will take care of it.
Appreciate it, Mr. Taylor, thank you sir.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Go on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move then into new business. Mrs. Cochran has three, just take them all. John's next, and then Heather, so go ahead if you don't mind, we'll just get through.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 7203-2022, a resolution approving the Village of Lakemore Police Department to apply for the Ohio Body-Worn Camera Program of 2023. But first, I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the three reads.
I'll second.
Everybody. I'll second, pick one.
You pick, any discussion, takes five, there's only five here. Roll call please.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
I'll second the original motion.
Thanks John. Is there any discussion on the original motion? Seeing none, roll call please, it's time to take four, I think.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 7206-2022, a resolution approving the fire chief to hire Willie Twitty as part-time firefighter medic with the Lakemore Fire Department. But at first, I, first I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the three reads.
I'll second. Takes five, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Second the original.
Thank you John.
Any discussion guys? Roll call please.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
I'll second the original.
Thank you.
Thanks Heather, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
I'll second the original.
Thank you.
Thanks Heather, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Takes four, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
I'll second the original.
Thank you.
Thanks Heather, any discussion? Roll call, takes five.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you Nikki. Awesome. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Stripmadder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Thanks John.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 1790-2022, and ordinance to amend ordinance 1743-2021, make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the Village of Lakemore, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022. But first, I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the three reads.